We're going to try this one more time. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We could do a little bit better. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
That's the spirit. Well, welcome to Google. My name is Javier Gonzalez. I'm the Government Affairs Manager for the South Bay. And we're very excited to have you here at Charlie's, at our headquarters. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. And we are thrilled to host this here at Charlie's this afternoon. To the community members, business members, thank you for being here. Elections matter, and they're important. And we're just happy to be part of this community. And we are excited to hear what the candidates have to say. For all of you who need to use the restroom, you will go to your right, my left, and security will point you to where the restrooms are. After the program, we will have a reception from 5:30 to 6:30 in the back. We have some beverages and some light snacks for you to enjoy, and also talk to those candidates. So once again, on behalf of Google, and the Google employees, and Google employees that live in Mountain View, welcome to our home. And we are excited for this afternoon. And with that, I am going to introduce Julie Coats.
Oh, I don't need the hand mic. There you go. Well, hello, everybody. Great afternoon. Early kickoff to fall, and here we are at a candidate debate, a very significant one. And thank you, Javier, for, you know, the introduction to our forum today. We're delighted to be here at Google's, you know, headquarters and cosponsoring, you know, this forum with Google. I'm Julie Cates, and I'm going to be the moderator today. I am a member of the League of Women Voters for the Los Altos Mountain View area. I want to extend my welcome, our welcome, to our candidates forum. And, you know, we're featuring the candidates for the City Council of the City of Mountain View. And again, as you're aware, there are three open seats, and we have six candidates. But first of all, a word about the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization of women and men, established to promote political responsibility through informed, active participation in government. The League does not support, or oppose, or evaluate political candidates or parties. Although our nonpartisan policy does not permit endorsement of political candidates, we do, after careful study, we take positions on political issues. The League invites anyone, everyone, who is interested in government, politics, and in serving our community, join us. Become a member of the League. And then, we also encourage you all to take advantage of the votersedge.org online website for more voter information. As Javier mentioned, after the forum, please join us. You can meet with candidates individually and ask your specific individual questions in the reception area at the back of the auditorium. And that reception will last until 6:30 PM. This forum is being videotaped by Google, and it will be made available by the League of Women Voters via a link from our League website, L W V L A N V dot org. The format for today's forum will be as follow. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. Next, the candidates will respond to questions from our audience. Submitted questions should be of general interest, that any of the candidates may be asked to respond. For each question, each candidate has an opportunity to respond. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Finally, the candidates will have two minutes to make their closing statements. To help keep us on track of time, we're making use of Google's electronic timing system. All of the candidates can see the timer down here, and I'll be monitoring that as well. So, we ask our audience and the candidates to abide by the following. The League volunteers are circulating throughout the forum to hand out cards, collect your questions. We ask for no audience demonstration, clapping during the forum. As always, turn off your electronic devices, anything that may beep or make any sound, because we're being videotaped. So, I, as moderator, will enforce the time limits. After I say, "Thank you, your time is up," please end your comments, candidates. Candidates are requested not to interrupt each other. Candidates have brought no support materials to the forum, but they may have a notepad, a pen, or a laptop to take notes. Their specific candidate material is available at the tables at the back. So with that, now I'd like to introduce our candidates.
Would you make that announcement?
Oh, I wanted to make sure you all are aware, we have the closed caption that you see that, so that will be accompanying the videotape. We also have someone who is making use of sign language to help anyone who needs that support. Right here. Okay, the candidates are seated in the order based on a random drawing done prior to the forum. So, starting at your left, we have Lenny Siegel, Allison Hicks, Pat Showalter, John Inks, Lucas Ramirez, and Ellen Kamai. So, welcome, candidates, and thank you all for agreeing to participate in today's forum. We're now ready to begin. We'll start with each candidate making their opening statement, with Lenny starting, and we'll go sequentially down the line, from the audience's left to right.
Good afternoon. Back in the 1960s, there was a newscaster in San Francisco who entered each newscast by saying, "This is the news. If you don't like it, go out and make some of your own." Well, I've been doing that ever since. A little more than four years ago, when I learned that the Mountain View Council was about to adopt a North Bay Shore plan that would add 13,000 to 17,000 new jobs and no new housing, I organized a campaign for a balanced Mountain View. We ended up electing three people who wanted to build housing in North Bay Shore, and now Mountain View is leading the region in building housing. I consider that a great success. I'm really happy that everybody here says they want to build more housing. I ask you to look carefully at what each of us is proposing, to see who's really most consistently and most thoroughly supporting solutions to our housing crisis. But I don't just want to build housing, I want to build neighborhoods. I want to have schools, parks, retail, offices, complete communities, designed so people don't have to drive to get to work, to get to school, to go to the store. That's what we're doing in North Bay Shore. It means we have to plan. You'll find that some of us don't like planning as much as the rest. Well, if we want our community to continue supporting building housing, then we have to do planning. So, the other thing about housing that I want to mention is rent control. I was the only council member that supported Measure V, and it passed. Now, I want to make sure that everybody who's elected wants to appoint people to the Rental Housing Committee who want to make it work. And specifically, I challenge all of my colleagues up here to take a position against the sneaky repeal, the deceptive effort by the landlords to repeal Measure P, pretending that they're just trying to tweak the charter amendment that was passed by the voters. So, not only vote for me on November 6th, vote for people who share my vision. Thank you.
And now we'll hear from Allison Hicks, opening statement.
Hi, is this working?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Hi, my name is Allison Hicks, and as Lenny alluded to a moment ago, over the next few years, Mountain View may, will grow a lot, and may become the fastest-growing city on the peninsula. I am the one candidate with the training and the experience to make that growth great growth. I have a master's in city planning, which Lenny also alluded to, from UC Berkeley, and experienced working on urban projects all over the Bay Area. I moved to Mountain View almost 20 years ago, when my son was born, and I was excited to move downtown, where I could buy groceries, take my kids to the parks and schools, take the train without ever getting into the car. I envision a future where our new neighborhoods, like North Bay Shore, which I strongly support, are as fabulous as the neighborhood that my children grew up in. With so much growth, we have an unparalleled opportunity to build the best city on the peninsula. As a candidate, I talk to lots of people. And my neighbors fear we're losing some of the things we love in Mountain View. They complain that we're losing retail, like bike stores and bookstores, that we're losing children's gyms and karate studios. They tell me that our parks are threatened, and that we're having trouble finding space for our new schools. They also feel that we're losing our public places, that our streets are sometimes becoming less walkable with the loss of retail and trees. It doesn't have to be this way. I agree that we need to build a model new Mountain View, and we're at a turning point. With my degree in city planning and experience building, doing urban projects around the Bay Area, I'm the one candidate qualified to make sure we provide that what we build now, we're proud of now and for generations to come.
Opening statement from Pat Showalter.
Good afternoon, everybody. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Google for hosting us here. I've lived in Mountain View for 34 years, and it's really been an honor to serve on the City Council of my community for the last four years. And being the mayor in 2016 was just an amazing experience. As I promised in 2014, when I ran, I've championed housing, reducing traffic, and protecting our environment. I've committed, I've continued Mountain View's longstanding custom of civility. I think this has, this has, this has served us very well, and I think it's one of the main reasons why we get so much done. Our accomplishments do make me proud. I got to vote to raise the minimum wage. We've added 2,500 housing units in the last four years, 370 of them are affordable. We're making our streets safer for bikes and walkers. We have quite a ways to go, making sure that our bike infrastructure is connected, but we've made great strides. We've opened three parks, and we have seven more on the drawing board. We convened the Sustainability Task Force II that made recommendations on how we could meet our greenhouse gas goals. I think that we all know that the most critical need in Mountain View right now is more housing. And as Allison and Lenny have mentioned, housing in the North Bay Shore is really the best place to put that and focus on that. We need to build new, dynamic neighborhoods, and we have a great plan. But you can't sleep in the plan. It won't help anybody if we don't build it. So my job number one for the next four years will be to see that the housing in the North Bay Shore gets built. Thank you.
Opening statement from John Inks.
Hello, everyone. John Inks, retired aerospace engineer with a long history of serving the City of Mountain View, first as a volunteer mediator, helping neighbors deal with barking dogs and trees and fences, that sort of thing. Went on to be a planning commissioner, after being a park commissioner for five years, and was eventually elected to City Council in 2008, re-elected 2012, served as mayor in 2013, and finally retired last year, doing exactly, planning to do exactly what I wanted to do, and that is full-time retirement. Later on, I'm going to talk about how I changed going from full retirement to coming back to the City Council. When I was on the City Council, I actually supported a lot of housing development, a lot of programs for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and safety, neighborhood traffic management, community choice energy. I approach policy a little differently from other policymakers, however, and that is, I think if you create an ordinance, if you create a law, it has to solve a problem, not just expand the bureaucracy. And I'm concerned now, because we have a lot of fees, and new fees, the proliferation of fees, that are actually challenging some of the development in the community now. So I look forward to getting back and working with residents and businesses, and dealing with the city, dealing with the planning department, and zoning, and issues with permits and signage, and all that sort of thing, that I think most council members helped the community, and that was one of the most interesting parts of the job before. So, I encourage you to go to my website, electinks.com, vote for John Inks on November 6th. Thank you.
Opening statement from Lucas Ramirez.
Thank you. Thank you very much for providing this opportunity to share our views. So thank you to the League and to Google for hosting. My name is Lucas Ramirez, I'm running for Mountain View City Council. And I'm running because I care about my community. I have had the good fortune to live in this city for my entire life. My parents, both, were born and raised here. My grandparents have been here since the 1940s. I would like to raise a family here someday. The Mountain View that I know has always been welcoming, diverse, and inclusive. But I believe that the housing crisis threatens the very character of the city that I know and love, and that I know we all share. I think that the next council, as several candidates have spoken to already, will have to make a number of very challenging decisions about how we, how we grow and how we evolve. And I look forward, should I have the good, you know, fortune to be elected, to play a role in helping implement the North Bay Shore Precise Plan, and to adopt a North, an East Wisman Precise Plan that also helps address our housing crisis. I also will work aggressively to address the traffic, safety and traffic congestion issues that pose a challenge to the city, and also to make City Hall more accessible to people, and to make sure that residents have, are well-informed about the decisions that we're making. I look forward to responding to the questions as they come along. Thank you.
Opening statement from Ellen Kamai.
Great. Good afternoon. My name is Ellen Kamai, and my family's been in Mountain View since this area was a landfill and pig farms, and this has come a long way, home to all of you, and Google a leader in our community and the world. The story of my family started here in Mountain View, and that's something that I hope to continue, as I seek to raise my family as a third-generation Mountain View resident. My partner and I are college-educated, and I have a master's in public administration. We're a dual-income household, but we fall into that category of six, of over 60% of residents in the city who are not yet homeowners, but truly seek to be. We are, as some of you in the audience, in the moderate bracket, the missing middle, with not enough for the million-dollar-plus single-family home it now costs to live here. For the past six years on the city's Environmental Planning Commission, I've helped to address some of the pressing issues in our city, trying to create more housing, creating traffic infrastructure, and making sure that we maintain our quality of life here in the city. Just south of where we live, the city's reviewing 5,000 new units in the East Wisman Precise Plan area. I'm an invested community volunteer. You may find me volunteering at the annual pancake breakfast, which will be happening this Saturday, please come and join us, or at Leadership Mountain View, where I've been on the Advisory Council for the last four years. For more than a decade, I have devoted my life to public service at every level of government, including city, county, state, and federal government. As your council member, I'll help lead the fight as we're creating more housing, trying to address public safety and our quality of life issues. Mountain View's been a welcoming place for me and my family, and I hope to continue that.
Let's give our candidates a round of applause for the opening statement. Thank you. We're now going to move to ask our candidates to address questions that have been developed from the audience. And again, for each question, we're going to ask each candidate to give a response. To mix it up a little bit, we're going to be changing the order, sometimes going right to left, left to right, and so, bear with me. I'm going to state the question in candidates, you know, as we go through it. Anytime if you need me to restate the question, just, just let me know. Okay, our first question. What is the role of the city to address the increasing homelessness problem and the number of people living in vehicles on the streets? Now, that's the general question. There's some specific comments. What is your specific stance? Are you okay if the homeless are next to parks? Are you okay if the homeless are in residential neighborhoods? So this time, we're going to start with Ellen Kamai, and then we're going to work back the reverse way.
Thank you. I love that our city has taken a compassionate approach to our homeless and vehicle dweller population. And we have taken some short-term steps to help address this, such as a safe parking program, which I support at Lots of Love. But I'd also like to support some more long-term solutions. So, one of the things that I have been exploring is an oversized vehicle parking ordinance. It's something that the City of Santa Barbara has. Something that the City of Berkeley has recently discussed is creating a parking permit program. From knocking on doors, I know that Mountain View residents want to get to know all of our neighbors, and I believe that creating such a program would be helpful for us to get to know each other, and to provide the holistic services that we need. In my time working at Santa Clara County for nearly four years for County Supervisor Joe Semidian, I worked on wraparound services, and I believe that same approach can be used as we try to help those in need.
Lucas Ramirez.
Thank you. Similarly, I support the compassionate approach that the city has taken. I think it's a very difficult problem to manage. We do bear a great responsibility, I believe, working alongside the county and with nonprofits like CSA, to reach out to the homeless population, and in particular, the vehicle dwellers, to make sure that they have access to the services that they need, to caseworkers who could help them transition to permanent supportive housing. I think that prevention is the most important aspect of a comprehensive program. I support Measure V, the rent stabilization program, because I think it will, in part, help prevent folks from getting priced out, and for those folks who have no place to go, you know, ensure that they're not forced to live on the streets. I also support using the Measure A funding that was approved by voters.
Thank you, Lucas. John Inks.
All right. Really, two-part question here. One has to do with the homeless situation, and in general, the social condition throughout the county now, where you have people who, you know, have a combination of economic and mental health challenges. They're quite visible in our community on Castro Street yesterday, yesterday afternoon. What the city has done, and this is pretty much all the city can do right now, because we really don't have a social services function in the city. We share a little bit with the county, and we give CSA some money, but actually solving a very, very challenging problem like that is difficult. As far as the RVs on the street, one thing that I would not do is, and this goes back to my first term, is not incentivize people to be on the street by offering free services, you know, free toilets, free showers, porta-potties, that sort of thing. It is a problem for the neighborhoods, and I don't think that the City Council should be subsidizing.
Thank you, John. Pat Showalter.
Yeah, this, this was a project that really got started when I was mayor. I noticed that there were a lot of RVs on the street, and so I asked the staff to look into having a parking program like we had in Santa Barbara. And that kind of started our, our increased efforts. It turns out that this is a very difficult problem to deal with. And one of the things we found when we, we surveyed our homeless residents, our vehicle dwellers, is that they were woefully unaware of the social services that were, they were eligible for, that might get them into permanent housing. So we have really beefed up those services dramatically, and I think that's important. The thing I'm most proud of, however, is the prevention services that we have made stronger through CSA. Last year, they serviced over 3,400 people. Now, all of those people might not have become homeless, but some of them wouldn't.
Thank you, Pat.
And I'm proud of that.
Allison Hicks.
So, this is a big problem, and very hard to address in one minute, so come up and talk to me after the forum. First, I'm proud that Mountain View is a compassionate city, and proud of what we've done to help those struggling to make ends meet. At the same time, from living in San Francisco, I know that what looks like compassion at one point can, over time, become a quagmire that's not really serving anyone. So, I think, you know, from talking to people as I campaigned, we're kind of at that point now. And I think we need to look at this problem in stages. I think that we need to have sanctioned places, large places outside of our neighborhoods and cities for, or downtown, for people to park. And we are currently providing that parking, along with services from the Measure A Housing Bond. And I see my time is running out, and I'm just not going to get there with the rest of the answers, so talk to me after the forum.
Lenny Siegel.
Vehicle dwellers that I've talked to are here in Mountain View for the same reasons as the rest of us. They work here, their kids go to school here, they retired here, they like the climate. They aren't here because there's a porta potty in Ringstorf Park. So, let's, let's get rid of that idea. What we're trying to do is hold together the fabric of our community. The best way to do it is to provide housing for people, so we're looking at building permanent supportive housing at Evelyn and Pioneer on the VTA lot. We're looking at a lot near 101 on Terra Linda to provide safe parking. I think it should be, people could park there 24 hours if they need to, so they don't have to take their RVs out into the neighborhoods. I'll have a security guard there, maybe charge people a token fee to take part. Treat it, treat it like a sanctioned encampment. The city is supporting people, helping bring them into the community, rather than trying to throw them out.
Thank you. For our next question, again, this time, we're going to start with Pat. And Pat, then we're going to move, from the audience's point of view, yeah, from left to right. So John, you would be next, and then we'll do a wrap. Now, the second question. How do you think the rent stabilization problem program is going? Is it helping renters? Is it fair to the landlords? What do you think would be the effect of Proposition 10 on Measure V? And again, we're going to start with Pat.
Ditto what Allison said about a minute. Come see me afterwards to talk about this. I do think that the rent stabilization program, Measure V, is helping people. There are about 15,000 units that are covered by this, and it is very helpful for people to know what their rent's going to be. We had an onslaught of people coming to us and telling us just these incredible stories about evictions. And frankly, that, fortunately, that has slowed down and almost come to a standstill, which is great. We don't want people being thrown into the street. This is a very complex program, and it hasn't really had a particularly smooth implementation. I'm not sure that that was a reasonable expectation, but it, I think that it is getting better. And what was the other one? Oh, oh, 10, the repeal of Costa Hawkins. That, and what would be the effect on Measure V? It's my understanding that it would pretty much have no effect on Measure V, one way or the other.
Hey, John.
I campaigned against rent control before Measure V even passed. I've been to more rent control meetings than I have City Council meetings. It has divided the city between landlords and tenants in a way unlike anything I've ever seen in the 43 years that I've lived in this city. The overwhelming majority of most economic housing policy organizations, like the American Economic Association, Foundation for Economic Education, the Multifamily Housing Council, many, many others, point to the long-term disaster of rent control. Ultimately, even though renters think they're doing okay right now, once rent control is implemented, it actually diminishes the supply of housing, which we're already seeing in Mountain View right now, with some of the older apartments being converted to residential. And so, I don't think Measure V works. Vote no on Prop 10.
Lucas.
Well, like Pat, I believe that Measure V has been beneficial to the community in providing stability and providing stability and certainty for renters who otherwise would be acutely impacted by the housing crisis. We had heard in the months leading up to the passage of Measure V that a great number of people were at risk of being priced out or evicted without cause. And so I think it has been a huge benefit to renters. Is it fair to landlords? I think the Rental Housing Committee has been working to address that concern. I don't think that's really the point of Measure V. I think the point of Measure V is to make sure that renters have protections. The impact of Prop 10, well, it will allow Measure V to be potentially amended, to expand its jurisdiction, but that will, you know, we'll see if it comes to that. That would also need to be approved by voters.
Ellen.
So, Mountain View, the region, the state is grappling with an affordability crisis, I feel, is at the root. And when the topic of rent control came forward in the 2016 election, I had supported Measure W because I thought an ordinance would be more nimble, in case we needed to make any changes as the rollout of the implementation. And what we've seen, I think, with Measure V is a bit of a difficulty in the implementation and administration of it. There have been questions about the type of people to appoint to the Rental Housing Board. You know, I support folks who are qualified, bring a diverse perspective, and so that it's fair for everyone. I think that that is what we need to remember, is we're all in this together. Whether you're a renter or a homeowner, you're grappling with the affordability. And rent stabilization is one tool. I think it's also about putting forward, making sure we have included units when we're reviewing projects, and it's, rather than in loofis.
Lenny.
Measure V is not a solution to the housing crisis. It is a way to prevent the displacement of people we need to make our community work. So I supported it, I continue to support it. I call upon my colleagues on the council and the candidates to be willing to appoint people who work for Measure V to the Rental Housing Commission. If reelected, I will be proposing some changes in Measure V. We've heard from city staff that there's some administrative issues that need to be fixed. And in particular, I want to make sure that mobile home spaces are covered, because the Rental Housing Committee, against legal advice, said, "No, we don't want to cover mobile home spaces," thus taking away equity from over 1,000 of our residents. So, again, I think Measure V is working, it's protecting people. And again, I call upon John to disassociate yourself from the landlord's sneaky repeal. It's not tweaking, it's not improving rent control, it's taking it away.
Allison.
So, I don't believe that rent control is the perfect solution to solving the housing problem for everyone. What I would prefer is a balance of housing in places throughout the Bay Area and the rest of California and the world. You know, I think there are other ways to address our housing affordability problem, but that Mountain View is working on those, and they don't come fast. I think our community rose up around Measure V, and that I fully support what the community has advocated as a temporary solution, which may be a long-term temporary solution, depending on how things play out. In terms of how Measure V has been, or the ordinance has been functioning, I think there were some people appointed to the board who were not behind making it function and not following some of the recommendations of staff and best practices. And that's one of the reasons it became so expensive, and I could say more, but my time is out.
For our next question, we're going to start with Lucas Ramirez. And again, we're going to wrap around after Lucas to Ellen Kamei, and then wrap around. So, for this question, let's see. I want to remind the candidates to not direct comments to each other. So make your own standalone statements. So, what is the role of the city in addressing the transportation issue within the city boundaries and across the region? For instance, do you support closing of Castro Street near the railroad tracks? What would you do to encourage more biking? So again, we're going to start this round with Lucas.
I'll do my best to provide a 10-minute response in one minute. So I, wow, where to begin? So I believe, I do support the council direction to close Castro at the tracks, because I believe that that is the most financially prudent and fastest way of addressing the problems created by the at-grade crossing at that intersection. As, once Caltrain is electrified, potentially, once we have high-speed rail operating down that corridor, we'll have a great number of trains running through the corridor. And every time a train runs through, there will be, you know, the arms will come down, and it'll halt traffic and create all kinds of safety hazards as well. We could have a grade separation, but those tend to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars and take many years to construct with many impacts. So broadly, we should support the TMA, we should work with employers who are providing private shuttle services. We need to work with the county and VTA to find funding for transportation improvements.
Ellen.
So, I've worked on four precise plans for the city, and I'm currently working on two more, the Terra Bella and the East Wisman Precise Plan area. And after housing, transportation, and how we're going to address traffic congestion is the, you know, thing that comes up the most. So, I think one of the ways that we can address this is making sure that we capitalize on the funding that's possible. So that's with Measure B funds, it's supporting measures like Measure P that's coming forward, it's also realizing that we can't work in a silo, we must work with our neighbors. And we've seen the bike boulevard through our cities as a way to connect places. We also need to make sure that we have bicycle and pedestrian-friendly streetscapes to encourage people. As well as when we've reviewed projects, we've tried to include eco-passes for the projects, so that residents will have that in perpetuity of the projects or for a certain amount. And it's also supporting the TMA and making sure that we make it easy for people.
Lenny.
I'm going to focus on the Downtown Transit Center, because it represents a lot of the ways we're approaching this issue. Right now, we have a very successful commuter railroad with a bus stop and a parking lot. I want to see that transformed into a transit center that serves as a gateway to Mountain View. We will have bicycle, pedestrian access under the tracks and along the tracks, so people can get there on their bikes. We will have, hopefully, an automated guideway, an elevated autonomous bus system that will zip people here to the Googleplex and Shoreline Amphitheater. And we will, hopefully, sooner, we will have a place for the shuttle buses to pick up on the north side of the tracks without winding through downtown Mountain View. So the idea is we have a holistic vision, a multimodal vision of tying together all of the forms of transit that serve our community in a way that not only serve commuters, but diners from out of town and residents.
Allison.
So to remind you of the question, it's what's the role of the city in improving our transit? So, I think the biggest thing, there are many, many ways to do it, but the biggest thing is to support Measure P, which is our updated business tax. Because improving transit, including all the things we're talking about, you know, bike and pedestrian paths, shuttle, automated guideway, and many other things, is extremely expensive. And we need a flow of cash to bond on, and without that, we really can't do anything. So, and we can't do North Bay Shore, as far as I can see, without some way of getting in and out of there. So, everything, I think, flows from, not everything, but a lot of things flow from having that money, and I urge you to support it. I also want that money so that we can not only build better transit, but build it well. I live near the downtown, and I have concerns that the pedestrian and bike act.
Thank you.
Has to be safe and attractive.
Pat.
Well, a lot of great things have already been said about this. I think that it's really important for the city, when you look at transportation, there's city streets, there are county streets, and there are state streets. And the, it's like this layer cake of responsibility, it's very difficult to work in. So we have to concentrate on the things that we have responsibility for. And one of those, of course, is bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Another thing is just getting the streetlights better timed, so that traffic can flow freely. But I think what we really need to keep in mind with this whole layer cake is the goal is to increase mobility. The goal is to make it easier for us all to get where we need to go, and hopefully, for many of us to make a lot of those trips either on our own two feet or on a bicycle. That's really the goal, that's what we need to keep in mind.
Thank you, Pat. John.
Yes, I'll just pick one topic, and that is transportation within the city boundaries. Right in my neighborhood, San Antonio Shopping Center, along with the shopping center, there's been a lot of street improvements there. The thing is, under the Congestion Management Agency, the requirements by the county, you have to maintain certain service levels, otherwise you must mitigate even further. So it'll be interesting to see, when Facebook moves in there, exactly how the streets and the lighting system that has been changed so far actually performs. So, I support, you know, the recommendations that came from the Congestion Management Agency. As far as closing Castro, probably the right thing to do. I don't think the downtown businesses were sufficiently informed of, you know, having an opportunity to weigh in on that. As far as bicycle pedestrian infrastructure, there are more projects in the CIP proposed. I think, like I did in my first term, I supported most of those, and will probably continue to do so again.
For our next question, we're going to start with Allison, and this time, we're going to wrap in the opposite direction. So Lenny will be second in line. Okay, so for this question, is the City of Mountain View doing enough to help the environment? Our concerns about sea level rise, carbon footprint, disappearance of trees, burrowing owls, how do they fit into what Mountain View should be doing?
Oh, gosh. I think the situation we're in, we can sort of never do enough for the environment. But I think we've taken some good first steps. One of the big first steps is to build housing and build it near transit. I would like to see more of that in terms of, the transit center I live near is downtown, and the other half of it, the Moffett area, I would like to see that as a walkable, a walkable street with housing as well. And I'd like to make sure that our downtown gets housing, not just offices. In addition to that, we have, now let me see if I can spit this out quickly, the Mountain View Sustainability Task Force 2 has put out an incredible several hundred pages worth of ideas. I think we need to fund them to do more, and we're also, okay, I'm running out of time. I can't say anymore.
Lenny.
First, Mountain View leads the country in knowing how to safely build new housing and new offices on contaminated property. I've been working on that since 1980. We're very successful at that. We're fortunate to have companies and regional agencies that want to restore our environment right here in North Bay Shore, the wetlands. It's a model project. The challenge we're facing is sustainability and greenhouse gas emissions. We've started programs like planning to build housing in North Bay Shore that will reduce our greenhouse gas emissions for our population, but it's not enough. We have to reduce it in absolute terms. The Sustainability Task Force has made some great recommendations, I support about 90% of them. So our job in the council is go through those one by one and implement those, but also to fight nationally, because the greatest threat to us is what the national administration is doing to undermine all forms of sustainability. And we can't just do it here in Mountain View, we have to lead the nation and tell the rest of the country that we got to save the planet.
Thank you. Ellen.
Mountain View needs to tackle our CO2 emissions from transportation, as well as our energy emissions, if we've learned anything from our Environmental Sustainability Task Force. And the city can take a big role in addressing it with transportation in our buildings. Starting with transportation, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at Measure P, we're looking at different ways that we can get people biking, walking, running, I'm an avid runner. But with buildings, I think that's another opportunity for us to push, as we have on the Environmental Planning Commission, for not only our minimum, which is lead silver, but pushing for lead gold, lead platinum buildings, that we really can be making some environmentally conscious choices. We also were given some ideas from the task force on some short-term and long-term goals. I think it's important to be looking at those as a city annually, and if we're on our way to meeting them.
Lucas.
If the housing crisis is the existential threat facing Mountain View, then climate change would be the existential threat facing the world. And so I think it is imperative that we work aggressively to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And the Environmental Sustainability Task Force has put forward a number of recommendations that we, as a city, need to act on swiftly. And beyond that, in the longer term, we need to make sure that we have a land use pattern that appropriately complements the transit system that we do have. Right now, we build in a way that makes traveling alone in a car pretty much the only viable option for most people. And so we need, as a mountain, as a city and regionally, to begin developing more densely, and, you know, in a more concentrated fashion around transit hubs, to make sure that we have alternative options that are viable for people to reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
John.
All right. As far as this range of environmental questions, going back into my last term is actually when the city council voted to incorporate a sea level rise study for North Bay Shore, to prepare for that for the future. As far as the carbon footprint issue, sustainability in general, as I told Bruce, I look forward to the recommendations from the consultant and the citywide survey coming out on, you know, what are the best things that we should be doing to reduce carbon footprint and so forth. As far as dropping trees, you know, overall, the tree canopy in this city has improved significantly in the time that I've been here. I mean, there are parts of the hills that I can't even see anymore because of all the tree growth in around, you know, the San Antonio area. So I think some people don't understand that managing the urban forest requires a mix of the old, new, and a bulk of new trees.
Thank you, John. Pat.
Hi, I'm an environmental engineer by training. I have devoted my career to working in water resources management. And the last 15 years or so, I specialized in restoration related to steelhead trout, and then on our creeks, and then on the South Bay salt ponds. So, working to improve and safeguard our environment is something that's vitally important to me. I think that as an environmentalist, the most important thing we can do is build housing near jobs and transit, so that people don't have to drive and we can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. I would also like to say that one of the things that's been such an honor is for me to be able to step up and take part in regional bodies, such as the Bay Conservation and Development Commission, and use my civil engineering training on these policy, on this policy board, to help make the changes that the Bay Area is going to need to protect itself against sea level rise.
Thank you. For the next question, we're going to start with John. And again, we're doing this reverse order, so after John will be Pat. So, the attendees here, our audience, are very concerned about housing, and the next two questions deal with housing. But we're going to take different slants of what to do about housing. The first question, the first to tackle this large issue, is focused on affordable housing. And we'll do just an open-ended, what will you do to increase affordable housing? So again, John?
It's only one part?
No, I'm going to do the second part for the next question. So we're going to allow you each to have one minute now, just to talk about affordable housing in general. The second question is going to be about the North Bay Shore development.
All right. Regarding affordable housing in general, probably the greatest source of what's called naturally affordable housing are the existing pre-95 apartments in Mountain View, which I alluded to earlier, because of rent control, are under threat right now. So I would say, first of all, address the policy issue associated with rent control that doesn't put lower-income people, you know, not in a position to have an apartment available, because it's being developed into, you know, a one and a half million dollar condo. And so I would protect, first of all, the existing, the great, because there's more, there are more of those small apartment complexes that provide naturally affordable rental housing, at least cheaper than the others, than all of the BMR units in the whole city. So, I would So I would work to protect the existing smaller apartments.
Pat?
Well, I served on the Environmental Planning Commission for nine years from 1992 to 2001. And one of the things that we got accomplished during that period that I'm most proud of is we put together the below-market rate ordinances and the ordinances that have the charge of fee for development for affordable housing. And those fees have added up over the years, and with those fees, Mountain View has been able to produce over 1,400 units of affordable housing. And right now, when you build a new housing development, 15% of it needs to be affordable. So the best way to increase affordable housing is to build more housing, and that's what I intend to champion. I've also worked through more regional, on a more regional basis, through Silicon Valley At Home and the Cities Association to inspire others to build housing and show them the example that Mountain View has provided.
Allison?
So, so actually, I've been saying that my, I have a degree in city and regional planning. Actually, my specialty is in affordable housing and project development. And I also worked for an affordable housing nonprofit for a number of years. So I would say, from what I've learned in my experience, there are four next steps. And one is to build housing in appropriate places. In terms of that, Mountain View is way ahead of the game, you know, way ahead of other cities. It's, you know, we've planned a lot of that. There are a few other places we could probably do it, such as downtown. I think we're getting too many offices and could get more housing. But build more housing in appropriate places. Two, make sure that we have a large enough percentage within those, that housing of below-market rate housing. Three, and critical, is make sure we have a jobs-housing balance because if we, if we keep building offices, it doesn't matter how much we build, it will never, it will never get affordable. And four, make it a model.
Thank you.
If it's bad housing, we'll be the only people doing it.
Lenny?
People have asked me whether I support standalone affordable housing projects or inclusionary housing where you have 15% in an apartment complex or set aside as below-market. The answer is yes. Mountain View has a history of building standalone projects that serve the development of disabled seniors, workforce. That's great stuff. We have collect fees and we help get it built. Inclusionary zoning is the best way to build large numbers. If we increase our housing stock by 10,000 units in North Bay Shore, that's more housing, affordable housing than we've built elsewhere in town. So what are the shortcomings? Shortcomings are the missing middle. How do we provide housing for people who don't qualify for the units that are built with federal low-income housing tax credits and entry-level ownership housing? And I support community land trusts, a way for people to get equity without having to buy at the market rate. So we're doing a lot, but we have a lot more to learn.
Great. Go ahead, Ellen.
Okay, great. So we've talked about as a city, creating more housing. We're looking at it in the North Bay Shore, which I support, the East Wisman Precise Plan, Terabella, and those are opportunities where we can ask for the included units, the inclusionary zoning, but also a variety of that type of stock. So for right now, a family of four in Santa Clara County, low to very low income can be a six-figure salary, which is very daunting as somebody who wants to be a future homeowner. But it's partnering with nonprofits as been discussed, SV At Home, it's looking at Measure A dollars that we can get from the county to leverage for standalone affordable housing projects. We've also been very aggressive in asking for the number of included units, moving from 10% BMR to 15 and talking about 20%.
Lucas?
Like most of my colleagues up here, I support the inclusionary housing ordinance that the city has and also the tiered development approach that we've taken in certain precise plan areas to get more affordable housing than we require under the inclusionary ordinance. Though I agree with the sentiment that the greatest way to increase the affordable housing stock is to build more housing generally. So successful implementation of the North Bay Shore Precise Plan could yield approximately 2,000 affordable units. We could probably have a substantial number of affordable units constructed in East Wisman with similar policies. In addition to that, we also have one of the higher commercial linkage fees in the region, so a fee assessed on new office development that helps pay for affordable, below-market rate housing projects, so continuing to support that program as well.
Thank you. So now our part two of the housing, and this deals more specifically with regarding the 9,850 housing units that are planned as part of the North Bay Shore Precise Plan. Do you think that developer fees might prevent any housing from being built? What do you think the council can do to ensure that the housing does get built? And so for this one, we're going to kick it off with Lenny, and then we're going to be doing again this after Lenny, we're going to be wrapping around to Ellen and then Lucas.
I tell developers that what I want, in order to serve the community with schools, parks, everything, I want to charge as much as I can on your developments without killing projects. And we recently had a discussion in the council, and we're going to do that. We're going to lock in the park fees so they don't keep going up after the project is already in design. We're going to have a negotiation with the school district so that the developers will contribute to the development of schools, but they aren't going to be the only ones paying for it. So, yeah, we, people wanted to build in Mountain View, we charged them to do it, and we end up with a good community. We don't just want housing, we want neighborhoods, and developers are responsible to contribute. And we're moving in the right direction by doing that, and we are going to get the housing built. It's not going to be as fast as y'all think because Google's not going to tear down buildings until they get new office buildings. But we're going to do it, and we're going to set a model for Stanford and for Cupertino and the rest of the region.
Ellen?
To get housing in the North Bay Shore, I think what we're seeing is it requires collaboration. And having been part of the discussions four or five years ago, something that really heartens me is the collaboration that we're having, not only with the school district, with the city, the majority landowner. We really want a complete neighborhood and a complete community here that does have parks, that does have amenities, and that also has infrastructure. One of the things that we studied is the traffic congestion that we see at the three different gateways. School is imperative to making sure that we don't contribute to the traffic, so families can be out here, their students can go to school. We're in those discussions. I think that there's no easy solution, given the cost of which it takes to develop, but I know that we are on the right track.
Lucas?
Thank you. The cost of development is a significant challenge in the implementation of the North Bay Shore Precise Plan. Fees on development are one component of the cost of development that the city does have complete discretion over. There are other challenges that we don't have a lot of opportunity to help address. So the cost of labor, the cost of construction materials are also increasing. The two greatest opportunities, I think, to help address the problem are to evaluate the requirements that we have on developers to work with school districts and the park fees that we assess on development. Those are the two greatest fees that are currently required. So like, I think, everybody up here and the community, I don't want to build housing that doesn't also help develop a neighborhood, you know, come with amenities, but I think those are the two things that we will need to look at.
Thank you. John?
All right. All right, so the 9,850 number of units or whatever, what a striking difference that was from when I was on council and there was a narrow 4-3 majority said no housing in North Bay Shore. What the housing policy now, though, is not necessarily rational. North Bay Shore is still basically a business park, and that there may be some housing, maybe subrato, but after that, then what? You know, I'm not sure you're going to have a complete community out there with a school and, you know, an integrated neighborhood and all of that, maybe down the road some way, but not right now. I would say right now, the North Bay Shore Precise Plan is unworkable because it costs millions, took years, overly specific, and now it's not really working out. It's not starting out very, very well at all.
Pat?
Well, I think you need to have a goal, and we have a goal of 9,850 housing units out here. We may not get all the way to that goal, but I'm sure not anywhere near ready to give it up. We did hear from a number of developers that the cost of our fees were kind of putting, making the production of housing untenable financially. And we didn't take that at face value. Well, the city hired a consultant to do that analysis as well, to verify if indeed that was the case, and they found out that, yes, it was. So when we find out that it's not fake news, it's real news, that something we've proposed isn't going to work, we have to go back to the drawing board a little bit, we have to collaborate, as Ellen mentioned, and we have to figure out how to make it work. And that's the mode we're in right now, and there is some wiggle room.
Thank you. Allison?
So the question, to remind everyone, was what can council do to make sure it gets built? So I agreed with much of what council said at the last council meeting on this. I think that we can make that housing, make that housing happen. I wouldn't pack your bags to move in tomorrow because I don't think it's going to be, Pat, I don't think it's going to be super quick. I think some of the things that council talked about, the developers were saying fees were too high, the two things that council looked at, one was park fees. I think there is the opportunity to, although I'm, I think that as we grow, it's imperative that we have good parks. I think that we can relook at what urban parks are. I think they can be places you walk, and my time is running out, so I'm going to. The other thing is, it's really difficult, we really need to build good schools there. The land's expensive, it's difficult to cite those. We can possibly get some money from the shoreline regional park community funds and talk to me afterwards.
And that's it. Great. So the next question, we're going to start with Pat, and we're going to go back to, after Pat will be John and then Lucas, wrap around that way. And this is probably our last question before we get to closing remarks. So like your view of, for the city of Mountain View, what is the role of small businesses? Do we need to attract more small businesses throughout the city? How would we do so? So again, we're going to kick this one off with Pat.
Small business, Mountain View is the center of innovation for Silicon Valley, and that means we're pretty much the center of innovation for the world. Though that innovation doesn't come typically from huge mega corporations, parts of it does, it usually comes from small businesses that grow. And so we need to support the birth of many small businesses. Not only that, you know, the services that we all enjoy, the restaurants, the bookstores, those are all small businesses. We all need to get our cars fixed, just all that sort of thing is a small business. So it's an important part of the fabric. One of the ways that we are attracting and supporting is in Measure P, we have really a de minimis fee for small businesses. If you're going up to only 50, 50 employees, the amount for employees is very small.
Thank you, Pat. John?
Yeah, there's two aspects of this. One is the small business, like a restaurant or something else, and the other is the startups, which have been alluded to. I would submit that the small businesses, the restaurants and so forth, they're under pressure because of minimum wage. Minimum wage, and it's difficult to find labor right now. So in some ways, a minimum wage aggravates the issue for small businesses. For the innovative businesses that may want to grow, they may want to start in Mountain View and then grow beyond that in Mountain View, that the way this steeply progressive employee tax works is that I think some of them are going to start to question, do I really want to start a business here when I'm going to have this employee tax burden when my company really, really takes off? So I think as far as treating small business, I think is to be mindful of both, you know, the mom-and-pop small business and the new technology businesses that can start in Mountain View.
Lucas?
Thank you. I believe that the city can play a significant role in helping foster an environment that inspires people to start a business here, and I believe that the greatest way to do that is to address the housing crisis. I, for those of you who had the opportunity to attend the Chamber of Commerce forum, I had mentioned that I worked for a small business, a small tech company in downtown Los Angeles for six years, and the cost of housing was the number-one obstacle to finding labor. So I think that that's, that really ought to be our primary focus.
Ellen?
I'm the granddaughter and daughter of small business owners here in the city. In the late 1940s, my grandparents returned to Mountain View after World War II, and my grandfather was a gardener until he saved enough money to open up his own flower-growing nursery on Bryant Avenue. And small businesses in the 1980s and 1990s, I believe, there was a small business council that would advise the city council on their needs. I support bringing that back and having that input from them because as we've learned with going about the business license tax, truly it's the mid-sized businesses that make up a majority of Mountain View businesses, and we want to make sure that, yes, we remain innovative, but we also are supportive of the backbone of the middle class, which has been traditionally small business owners.
Lenny?
Mountain View is perhaps the best place in the world to start up a tech business. It's a great place to have restaurants. We do this not by lowering taxes or weakening regulations, we do it by having a great quality of life, by protecting our environment, and by having a strong educational system. Our weak spots are housing and transportation. We've talked about that. That's why we have Measure P. We want to tax employers to provide the transit that we need to get people to work. The minimum wage is not the problem. There's a downtown business that cut back its hours because it couldn't hire people at $18 an hour. Our minimum wage is $15 an hour. So that's bogus. So again, we need to take steps to improve non-restaurant retail. I was talking to someone from Portland, Oregon, they have a program of incentivizing ground floor retail in multiple-story buildings to provide discount spaces, create retail space. High rents are a problem for retail as well as homes.
So with that, now we're going to give our...
Do I get to answer?
Oh, did I miss you, Allison? Please.
My favorite question.
I did. Please.
Okay. And this is on? Is it on?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So when I talk to voters, one of the big things they talk about is the incredible loss of small businesses that they've loved in Mountain View, you know, or potential loss, whether it's bookstore, used bookstore, beer houses, children's gyms, karate studios, bike shops. This is on El Camino downtown, in shopping plazas, just all over the place. There's an incredible loss. It's not just happening in Mountain View, but people really notice it. And it's important because small businesses, particularly on our walkable streets like our downtown and village centers, are where, I know I go to do my errands, I run into neighbors, these are our public places, and these are what make our streets public places. We need to do things that cities around the country are doing. A lot of cities are experiencing this sort of Amazon-ification of retail. But we addressed it before when retailers were moving off of Castro Street and into shopping plazas up and down El Camino. We revived that street.
Thank you, Allison.
And we can do it again.
So now, we want to give our candidates a chance to make their closing statements. And again, you each have two minutes, and this time, we're going to start with Ellen Kame, and then we'll work our way back down to Lenny. So Ellen Kame, please kick us off.
Okay. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thank you to all of you who are invested in hearing about the next 42 days until Election Day. I hope that this is the beginning of our conversation together. You've heard from all of us, and I hope from me what you've heard is somebody who's truly trying to make your city better, whether it's through volunteering with various organizations in the city, whether it's my track record on the Environmental Planning Commission trying to serve residents the last six years, or perhaps... trying to serve residents the last six years, or perhaps we share a commonality in that you're 25% of the population, you're a millennial who's trying to raise your family here, or perhaps you're 60% of the population who is renting but hopes to be a homeowner one day, or perhaps I'm like your daughter who hopes to come back to a very high-expensive region after college, or your granddaughter, as I did when I moved back to Mountain View to help take care of my alien grandparents. We have a lot of commonalities, and I will work for you as your council member to increase housing, but a variety of housing, especially our middle-income residents, especially for our seniors, for those who are, takes more subsidies or funding to create those housing opportunities for, for traffic congestion and alleviation, for the open space, the parks, the neighborhoods that we all enjoy. Thank you, and I hope you'll vote for me, Ellen Kamay, on November 6th. I'm number three on your ballot.
Lucas Ramirez.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank, once again, the League of Women Voters and Google for hosting this forum and testing our ability to answer complicated questions in one minute. It's always a lot of fun. So I simply would like to emphasize that I am concerned about the impact of the housing crisis on our community, and that's, I think, the primary responsibility of not only the next council, but several councils in succession, in working aggressively to increase housing stock, successfully implement the North Bay Shore and East Wisman Precise Plans, to develop a community vision for the Terabella area, increase housing stock, both affordable and market rate, and as my friend Ellen had mentioned, also increasing the, sort of the diversity of housing stock. So we have opportunities not only for young professionals seeking to raise a family here, but also seniors who would like to age in place. This is a community that, that I believe is, or should be, must be, accessible to everybody. But those aren't, that's not the only issue. We also have a great number, a great number of other issues that threaten our community. The traffic congestion and traffic safety issues, I think, are paramount. We've spoken at length about homelessness and vehicle dwellers. These are very challenging, you know, sort of part of the housing crisis generally, and I think, you know, it's imperative for whichever combination of us gets elected to work together to address them. If you would like to learn more, please visit my website, ramirezforcouncil.com. I look forward to speaking with you at the reception.
John Ings.
Yes, in my opening remarks, I alluded to the fact of my retirement, coming out of retirement. Let me explain that. One is something personal. I found out as a retired person, I still have the aptitude, the energy, the interest for work. That's number one. Number two, I found that this time, the situation with the Mountain View City Council is such that there are issues that are very, very critical that need to be addressed. One of them has to do with the planning, and I'll talk about North Bay Shore specifically, basically a precise plan that has stalled. You know, three years ago, we had a gatekeeper for Terabella area, and we had a room full of developers with the land, labor, and capital actually to bring, office space, residential space, private open space, public storage space, it was there. So there are places in the city that have been neglected, North Bay Shore being, well, not North Bay Shore, I mean North Ringstorf and Terabella. The city's planning system is not responsive to the needs of the whole city, and we need to change it. I would like to be on the council to help foster that. The second one has to do with being blunt and direct about rent control. You talk about the landlord initiative being a sneaky repeal. What about the sneaky attack on private property that Measure V was itself? Measure V commanded the city basically to seize the finances and therefore the operations and maintenance of half the housing in this city. Not in the strict legal sense, a taking, but in the practical sense, that's exactly what it was, relegating private property to being a public utility. That was completely wrong, that's the moral reason why Measure V is completely flawed, in addition to all of the other practical economic arguments. Electings.com.
Pat Schellwalter.
Well, thanks again to the League of Women Voters and Google for sponsoring this forum. I think this is the best way for people to make decisions about who they'd like to support on November 6th. I'm number four on the ballot, and I hope many of you will support me, if not all. I, as I promised in 2014, I've championed housing, reducing traffic, and protecting our environment. I'm an environmental engineer by training. I've worked in government for many, many years, so I understand how government works, and I really love working at this policy level. I, one of the things that hasn't been brought up right today that I would like to bring up is the support for the Los Altos School District. I'm one of the people who think that we need to have a school in the San Antonio area, but it needs to serve Mountain View kids. That's, that's something that is going to be decided maybe in the next few months, but maybe it'll take longer. During my career as an environmental engineer, I focused on thorny problems that used, that required multiple agencies to work together, and I use those collaboration skills on the city council and also on the regional boards that I serve on, and I would like to continue doing that. I've been fighting the perils of prosperity for the last four years for you, which are too little housing and too much traffic. I'm pragmatic, I'm persistent, and I'm progressive, and I hope you'll vote for me on November 6th. Thank you.
Allison Hicks.
Sometimes when I campaign, people imply we have to make a choice between growth and livability, and I think that's a false choice. When I studied and practiced urban planning, it was always about maximizing livability as we change. Cities evolve and grow, and as you've seen tonight, as we've talked about tonight, we have critical needs to address, whether they're housing, affordable housing, transit, finding space for schools, and more. I believe that our job as council members is to address those needs while making sure Mountain View remains a place we love to live. And I have experienced doing just that with the projects I've worked on around the Bay Area, which included nonprofit affordable housing, it was actually a land trust, walkable streets in Willow Glen with shade trees, with shade trees, adequate parking, great small businesses, and attractive architecture, downtown revitalization, and improving and maintaining parks and schoolyards. It's all about livable and balanced growth. Thank you. It's all about livable and balanced growth, and that's the job I ask you to elect me to fulfill.
Lenny Siegel.
I want to thank you all for coming. The theme of my campaign, the theme of my inaugural speech when I became mayor in January, is that Mountain View is a leader. We're not just a leader in housing and transportation and the environment. We're a leader by adopting the highest minimum wage around. We're a leader in setting up marijuana shops where we can regulate marijuana trade. We're a leader in providing a Spanish-language leadership academy. And what does that do? It means we have a well-managed city. It means, and I found this by going door-to-door in the community and talking to people at the Art and Wine Festival, people like living in Mountain View. We have a strong economy because we have a great quality of life, and it's our job on the council to do what we can to preserve it. Now, here you heard a lot of people saying pretty much the same things. I ask as you prepare to vote that you look at who's supporting whom. A lot of people say they're for housing, but they drag their feet when it comes before the council. Who, I don't, I'm not going to name names. Take a look at who's financing campaigns. I'm turning down money from developers and major employers, and indeed from Russian oligarchs. So, so I said, Mountain View is a leader. I think of myself as a leader. I'm somebody who is willing to speak out, so you might not always agree with me, but you'll know where I stand. A lot of people run for office and they try to reach out to the lowest common denominator. I'm not going to do that. I'm going to stand up for what I believe, and one of the things that we need to do this year, given what's going on in Washington, is to stand up against Trump. Net neutrality, the environment, housing, transportation, you name it. I was out at a vigil the other night. We believe Christine. We organized a rally against the alt-right. We want to support the kids at the border.
Thank you, Lenny.
We need to stand up for Mountain View and the country.
Well, this concludes the closing remarks of all of our candidates, and I'd like to thank the candidates for participating tonight. I'd also like to thank our League and our Google volunteers. If you raise your hands, thank you for making this possible. Yes, let's give, let's give them all a round of applause. So this forum has been...
And thank you to our moderator.
Oh, thank you. This forum has been designed to impart information to you, the voter, in accordance with our League's belief that a democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. We hope that the insights you gained from this forum will help you in making your decision on the election ballot. For more voter information, again, please visit our Voters Edge website, and you'll find information about additional candidate forums, information forums on our state and county propositions. Couple reminders, this is the last day to register to vote or update. Your registration is October 22nd, and we have computers staffed over along that wall with knowledgeable people. You can wander over there and you can check your registration online now to make sure that it's up to date. You can cast your ballot beginning October 8th up until election night, November 6th, at 8:00 PM. You can request a vote-by-mail ballot up until October 30th. So again, we invite you all to join us, join the League, and we have information at the back tables on how you can join, because it's with all your help, our help, that we're making our democracy work. And so with that, I know we have Javier to close this out.
Thank you so much. One more round of applause for our candidates. Our moderator, that did an amazing job. We also want to acknowledge Sue Graham with the League, who I've been working with, and my colleague Laura Lee. So let's give them a round of applause. Their support and help made this event possible. We'd like to invite you all to join us in the back for a reception and a meet and greet with the candidates, and maybe you can ask individual questions. With that, once again, thank you all for visiting us and joining us, and we're very excited to have you here today. Thank you.